Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on December 10th, 2020 at 5:08 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a quorum of the board will be participating in person by video conference or telephone conference in accordance with the provisions of Section 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the governor. All or some trustees and limited staff may be together while maintaining proper social distancing at Room 301 in the McBurn Professional Development Center. Due to ongoing safety concerns, all open meeting proceedings will be live broadcast, but members of the public will be limited in the McBurn Professional Development Center pursuant to state guidelines and regulations, and all persons will be required to comply with state and district guidelines and regulations. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on December 10th, 2020, beginning at 5:10 PM will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 6:15 PM. Thank you. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for December 10th, 2020, beginning at 6:55 PM. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Reich in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Please make sure to silence all cell phones or electronic devices to avoid any disruptions around you, and if you are speaking, please do the same. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. The first item on our agenda is our program and presentation. Our first presentation is our Student of the Month recognition. Our high school student of the month for December 2020 is Bowie High School student Gavin Thorn. Bowie High School Principal, Mr. Rennie Lizardo. Mr. Lizardo, would you please share some information about Mr. Thorn?
Thank you, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, board members. Thank you again for this opportunity to present one of our very best. Gavin Thorn is a respectful, hardworking, responsible young man who is not afraid of challenges. He puts his best foot forward in all of his endeavors, and that approach has helped him gain recognition in the community as well as among his peers. Gavin has been selected to participate in the Youth Art Month exhibit at the Arlington Museum of Art, and he has been recognized as at the Bowie Principals Breakfast many times. Gavin is currently serving as the president of the Alpha Ambassador Club, and his impressive academic body of work has earned him a spot in the National Honor Society. Gavin has spent some of his free time volunteering with Grand Prairie United Charities, Kettering County Area Food Banks, and Mission Arlington, and he is a stagehand for the Bowie's Theater production. This young man is a great example of what we mean at Bowie when we say cross the line, and we look forward to seeing the great things he will do in the future.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lizardo. Well, congratulations, Mr. Gavin Thorn. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, yes. First, I just thank my counselor, Ms. Franklin, for actually nominating me, and then I would like to thank Mr. Lizardo for actually accepting it and letting me represent the school, the district.
Well, thank you very much, Gavin. Just want to say congratulations. Thank you for crossing the line and stepping up and being such a great ambassador for not only Bowie High School but Arlington ISD. So, we wish you well with your future. Sounds like you're well on your way. And once again, congratulations for being Student of the Month. Thank you, Mr. Lizardo. Okay, our next presentation is our National Merit semifinalist, National Hispanic Scholars, and National African American Scholars. Ms. Anita Foster, are you there to share some information and introduce the students for us?
I would be delighted. President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board, I'd like to take a moment before we introduce our National Merit semifinalist, our National African American Scholars, and our National Hispanic Scholars to tell you just a little bit about these outstanding programs. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships available to students who take the PSAT and meet the published requirements. There are 1.5 million entrants, and approximately 16,000 students are identified as semifinalists. And this year, Arlington ISD is home to five of the winning students. The National African American Recognition Program identifies outstanding African American high school students and shares information about the academically well-prepared students with subscribing colleges and universities. This year, Arlington ISD has three outstanding students in that category. And the National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies outstanding Hispanic high school students and also shares that information about their academic preparedness with subscribing colleges and universities. Every year, about 5,000 outstanding high school scholars are honored, and this year, Arlington ISD is home to three of those outstanding students. And just a couple of notable, interesting facts about these students. Seven out of the 11 actually started school in the Arlington ISD in pre-K, kindergarten, or first grade, and seven plan to study something in the field of science after they graduate from high school. And five of them are actually leaning to in-state college after they graduate from Arlington. So, this evening, these students are actually going to be our very first for the 2021 school year to actually be recognized on the Wall of Fame that's over at our administrative building at 1203 West Pioneer Parkway. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize the principals of these students because our principals, an accomplishment that they can be just as proud of too for supporting these students throughout their growth. Dr. Shaver Dalla from Arlington High School, Marlene Roddy with Martin High School, and Juan Villarreal with Sam Houston High School. Congratulations, principals. Job well done. So, as you can see, because we're on Zoom, that we are doing this a little bit differently. Typically, we gather in the boardroom, and we get to meet all the families face-to-face and share in the enthusiasm. We're not going to miss a celebration just because we have to be virtual. We gathered everybody here that we could on our Zoom call because we still want you to meet these outstanding students. So, what we're going to do tonight, students, I'm going to introduce you guys alphabetically, and we'll have you share where you went to elementary and junior high school. Tell us about a teacher that had an impact on you along the way, what your plans are after graduation, and then introduce the fans that are joining you on our Zoom call today. So, we're going to start with Omar Jabo, one of our National African American Scholars from Sam Houston High School.
Hello.
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 Hey, my name's Omar Jabo. I go to Sam currently. I come from Workman Junior High and Atherton Elementary, as well as Anderson Elementary. I plan to be a surgeon when I grow up, and also, this is my mother, right here, Maria. A teacher that had an impact on me was my sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Spurlock. And yeah, it made me really realize how important it was to stay focused on that path. Yeah.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Congratulations. Next is Julia Garcia from Martin High School and National Hispanic Scholar.
Hi, I'm Julia Garcia. I went to Middle High Elementary and Young Junior High. I plan on studying aerospace engineering, and a teacher that has impacted me is my physics teacher right now, Mr. Atman.
Stay where?
And Julia, who is your fan club?
This is my mom, Stacy, my dad, Art, and my little brother Jake.
Well, congratulations to all of you. Next, we have Matthew Lewis from Arlington High School and National Merit semifinalist.
Hi, I'm Matthew Lewis. I went to Duff Elementary and Bailey Junior High. I, this, I would say that a teacher that's had a good impact on me was my last-year chemistry teacher. He really made me love chemistry, I think, and that's what I'm going to do in college. And this is my dad, Ted, and this is my mom, Amy.
Hello.
Fantastic. Well, congratulations. It's always good to hear that a teacher has an impact on you, and you want to now pursue that yourself. That's very exciting, so congratulations. Nicholas Kacserk from Martin High School is a National Merit semifinalist.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Kacserk. As they said, I am a senior at Martin High School. I went to a small school called the Montessori Academy for elementary and then a small school called North Star for middle school, but I joined AISD in ninth grade, starting with Martin High School. My comp site teacher, Mr. Hovey, I think has given me a lot through the four years of high school. I've had him every year in, I think, five classes now, and he's always taken me in the right direction and taught me things that I don't think I would have gotten anywhere else. With me today, I have my father. And after high school this year, I'm hoping to study computer science with a minor in cognitive science or neural computation at a research university. So, yeah.
Well, congratulations. Those are huge goals, but you've already accomplished a great deal, so no question, you'll tackle the next ones. Good job. Tonight, we're, we have a student from Martin High School that couldn't be with us, but I still wanted to recognize this person as a National African American Scholar, and that's Chojoki M. Jibah Hurake. So, congratulations. We'll pass on the good wishes. Marshall Peel is with us tonight from Martin High School, a National Hispanic Scholar.
Hello, my name is Mar Peel, and this is my mom, and this is my dad. My sibling is off-screen. I attended Little Elementary, Young Junior High, and now I go to Martin High School.
It's only me.
Oh, yeah. I was really grateful to meet and be in class with a teacher named Daniel Dar, really inspired me as an AP art student, and I'm going to hopefully go to UT Austin and pursue a creative career in video game design.
That is fantastic. Congratulations. Nathan Reed from Martin High School is a National Merit semifinalist.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Nathan. I've been in AISD for like forever. I went to Beben C. Elementary and then Ausley Junior High, and then over to Martin High School. One teacher that I think had a big impact on me was Christopher Wagner at Ausley. I think he was a mentor to a lot of his students. He taught us how to, just how to be mature young adults, and that's not, not something that you get a lot of places. After high school, I'm probably going to be going to Stephen F. Austin University, and I'm going to be studying in a multi-disciplinary track. Behind me is my mom, Jeanette, and my dad, Charles.
Well, congratulations. We're so glad to have you all on the Zoom call tonight.
Thank you.
Up next, a National Merit semifinalist, Logan Simon from Martin High School.
Hi, I'm Logan Simon. I go to Martin High School. I went to Crow Elementary and then Carter, so I sort of migrated to Martin for the STEM Academy. A teacher that's influenced me a lot is my computer science teacher, Mr. Hovey. At a point where I thought I was really only good at like one thing, math, he showed me that I could like broaden my horizons and do a lot of different things, and I'm grateful to have him. And then here is my mom, Jennifer, my stepdad, Greg. And I don't know where I'm going to go to college, but I do want to do computer science thanks to Hovey.
Oh, that's terrific. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Next is a National Hispanic Scholar from Martin High School, Amelia Stalins.
Hi, I'm Amelia, and I started out at Marymore Elementary, and then I went to Bowles Junior High, and then eventually to Martin. A teacher who really impacted me during school was my fourth-grade math teacher, Ms. Wayne, because she really taught me that even if I don't plan on doing something forever, persevering through it and working through it is really going to help me in the long run. And she really convinced me to just never give up on anything, so I'm forever grateful to her for that. I plan on going to Texas A&amp;M and majoring in chemistry, hopefully in a pre-farm track. And, oh, this is my mom, Cynthia, with me.
Well, congratulations. I demonstrated that education is about more than just what you learn in the classroom, learning about life, and you're going to do outstanding, so congratulations. Nathan Trong cannot be with us tonight, but he's a National Merit semifinalist also from Martin High School. And last but certainly not least is Earl Wright III, Martin High School, a National African American Scholar.
Hi, everybody. I hope you're enjoying both and staying safe at home. My name is Earl Wright, and I also go to Martin High School, and I'm in STEM Academy. Tonight, I'm being joined by my mother, Cheryl, and my brother Gavin, and my dad, he's actually on a business trip right now, but he is tuning in, so hi, Dad. So, prior to being at Martin High School, I went to three different schools. I went to St. Paul's Preparatory Academy and Fellowship Academy for elementary school, and then for middle school, I went to Arlington Classics Academy. And the teacher that I wanted to recognize actually goes to Arlington Classics Academy as well. She was my sixth-grade social studies teacher, and her name is Ms. Yolanda Dawson. And by the time I was in eighth grade, she was my vice principal, so she's been keeping me in line since day one. And after high school, I'm planning to study neuroscience and then minor in Spanish, or either get my certificate in Spanish, on a pre-med track. And while I've gotten a couple of acceptances, I'm still looking around.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Guys, I want to thank you all. You're so accomplished, and you just, you just represent the very, very best and brightest from the Arlington ISD, and there's no question that you are well-prepared to go out there and tackle your future with a lot of love, a lot of passion, and a lot of inspiration for others. So, congratulations to our principals, to all of your teachers who helped you along the way, your families that are with you and those that are not here tonight, and all your friends who've stood by you to watch you be as successful as you are. So, with great wishes from all of us at the Arlington ISD. Congratulations.
Well said, Ms. Foster. Congratulations to all of you. It is really nice to not only hear you talk about teachers that have influenced you, but also to see your family members around you who we know have had a huge influence on you as well. So, once again, congratulations to each of you. Good luck on your future endeavors for your colleges. Next, our appointments, of which we have none this evening, so we'll move on our agenda to our public hearing. Next, we will open our public hearing, Target Improvement Plans for Second-Year F Campuses, which includes Short Elementary and Spear Elementary, our D campuses, Berry Elementary, Blatton Elementary, Crow Elementary, Ellis Elementary, Hell Elementary, Larson Elementary, Morton Elementary, Patrick Elementary, Peach Elementary, Rankin Elementary, South Davis Elementary, Thornton Elementary, and Webb Elementary, and Comprehensive Support Campuses, Sam Houston High School and Venture High School. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for your review and in this public hearing and later on the agenda, I recommend that you adopt these plans, targeted improvement plans, as you mentioned. And so, I'll ask our Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership, Dr. Tracy Brown, to take us through the presentation. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening, President Mays and members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos again. I'm happy to share the targeted improvement plan process with you all this evening, and I'm partnering this evening with our Director of School Improvement and Leadership, Jared Zahn. He'll be co-presenting with me today, so I'll go ahead and get started. There we go. Sorry, had to get it going there.
There we go.
So, today will provide us a brief overview, and that will be an accountability update, which we did receive a new update this afternoon, actually. We'll talk about expectations for the four different types of schools who require to write a targeted improvement plan, and that would be our overall D campuses, our comprehensive support campuses, our second-year F-rated campuses. We'll also talk to you about progress made on two of our two-year F schools, which are Short and Spear Elementary, and then speak in general about capacity building for campuses to ensure that continuous improvement continues, of course, at these campuses and all of them. So, for accountability, we all know what is required, what's expected of TEA, and these are the three areas that we are rated on: student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. And as we think about a couple of updates this year for 2020, 2021, we know that all districts and campuses were not rated in 2020. That's because of the declaration of the disaster for Texas. So, those who were in intervention from in 2019, that, of course, continues through this year, and so that's why you see the same schools who are a part of the targeted improvement plan process. So, the agency, when we wrote this, well, they're working with stakeholders and getting input from different groups and just to try to make determination on the recommendation for accountability for 2021, and we did find out this afternoon that accountability will not be implemented for 2020, 21. However, our students will be taking the STAR exam, so we're not sure at this point what that means as it relates to interventions. Again, these schools that we're seeing today are on the second year of intervention based on the previous rating, so we're not sure how that's going to impact the subsequent year as it relates to intervention requirements for these schools. So, I've already shared with you the types of campuses that are required to be in intervention and write a targeted improvement plan. So, briefly, just to share with you the expectations for those campuses who are required to have interventions. TEA does require districts to appoint a DCSI, which is a District Coordinator for School Improvement. Our DCSI is Mr. Zahn, who you'll hear from today, and this person really is our liaison between TEA and the state, excuse me, TEA and the district. They make sure that all of our improvement plans are up to date, they're current, that we are monitoring progress, and they also engage in phone calls and progress checks with TEA as well as Region 11, and that is Mr. Zahn's primary role as the DCSI. The public meeting, it was important that we get input, stakeholder input, from staff members and from family, of course, on the targeted improvement plan to make sure that we were targeting the right areas for improvement in our schools, and so that was had, of course. And then we're presenting the approval today, the tips to you, Mr. Zahn, a little bit later. Now, you all had an opportunity to, of course, review all those tips. We got those to you a little while ago, and so today, we'll just speak in general about that process for developing a tip, what's considered, and then how we progress monitor. Throughout the year, the DCSI and the campus leadership team, which usually is the principal, have teachers on the campus leadership team as well as other admin. They're the ones that get together and they, through 90-minute, excuse me, 90-day updates to ensure that the level of implementation is happening the way it should be with those tips. So, they are reviewing strategies, reviewing processes, making adjustments and making recommendations for continued improvement throughout the year. The last part is the results and reflections. The principals and this campus leadership team do work with the DCSI throughout the year, again, just to check in and see how things are going, look at those specific essential actions that they've identified as areas of opportunity, and to make sure that progress is being made, and if progress is not being made, what are some adjustments that we might need to be able to make to ensure the campus gets stronger in those specific and designated essential actions. So, I would like just to reorient the group to our school improvement team. Mr. Zahn, as I mentioned, is our Director of School Improvement. We also have a coordinator, and we also have instructional facilitators who also support these particular schools. A few years ago, we created, developed the Strategic Support Network about three years ago, and so the plan was to really be able to have a group of schools that have a, have common challenges and struggles and really be able to put them in one group to provide intervention, support, targeted aligned resources for this group of schools. So, this year, we have 13 schools who are part of the Strategic Support Network. Dr. Christina Turner is our area superintendent, who is leading this group of schools in the 13 priority campuses, but all those campuses have to create a targeted improvement plan, which you, of course, have access to. The only one who's a part of SSN who does not have to submit a tip to TEA is Pope. We did include Pope as a priority campus this year in SSN in a proactive measure, just to make sure that we were able to monitor them a little bit closer, and so that's why you'll see the asterisks next to Pope. We also have focus campuses. So, these are campuses that are not a part of the Strategic Support Network. However, they are required to submit a targeted improvement plan, so it's very important that we still are closely aligned with this particular group of campuses to ensure that we're monitoring the tip, that we're making sure that we move beyond the D to a much higher grade ranking when our accountability system does kick back into gear. Capacity building, we have area superintendents, of course, who are supporting these schools. Even though Dr. Turner is the area super, over the SSN, we do have other area superintendents who have focus schools, and so all of them work in concert with the Director of School Improvement, our coordinator, and our instructional facilitators. The instructional facilitators is, that's a newer role that we've, we created actually last year, and that role was created to make sure we can do a better job of addressing literacy gaps in our SSN schools, our priority schools in essence. So, these particular groups of staff members work in connection with the instructional coaches, they work with the deans in planning and supportive teachers to ensure they have the resources and the content knowledge to be able to move our literacy practices on our campuses. So, this is just a graphic to share the types of support that's being offered by the school improvement team, which is a part of the Office of School Leadership. So, I mentioned that there's a lot of support with the instructional leadership team. There's also support with data meetings and professional learning communities. The members of this team, they're regular visitors at these PLCs, and mainly, it is to make sure that they have the, the support needed to plan effectively, they have the content, they have the resources needed to make the most effective plans to support our students. They also walk classrooms virtually and in person alongside the leadership team to ensure, again, that there's a calibrated lens around the instruction that we're seeing in the classroom, as well as helping determine next steps for implementation and support. There's also lots of professional learning that happens. Much of that, of course, is optional for some, and that is in the daytime, we offer impact sessions, we offer lunch and learns as well, which we did in person when we were in person, not as much now, of course, we can't do that, but we're still offering those types of drill-down sessions with very specific targeted TEES objectives reviews during the six weeks. So, at the, in the upcoming six weeks, the team gets a zero in. So at the, in the upcoming six weeks, the team gets a zero in and drill down on specific TEES that have been challenging for students or for teachers to teach or assess. And then through that, they'll be able to make more solid plans for the upcoming six weeks. For those schools that require intervention, there's a lot of modeling and coaching. These instructional facilitators and director and coordinator have built pretty solid relationships with the teams on the campuses. Most of them worked with them last year as well, so that relationship just continued and carried on through this, of course, this year. They provide lots of technical assistance, of course, with the development of the tip and the TAP, which are the turnaround plans that our two-year F schools had to write, that you all approved earlier in 2020. And then we have a lot of other campuses who are not a part of the SSN, who are not focus schools, but still may have support and needs as well. And so on an all basis, our school improvement team also offers those impact sessions to any school that's willing and interested in attending for teachers, instructional coaches and deans, as well as support for new teachers and collaboration between our CNI department, professional learning, and our TI squared. And that's something I really want to make sure that we highlight is, it is a partnership. So this is the Office of School Leadership, but we know that we can't do any of this work in a vacuum. And so we have lots of support from the other departments in helping support these campuses. So now, Mr. Zahn is going to take over, and he's going to spend some time talking about the targeted improvement planning overview, and then go in more specific details about progress of a couple of those campuses, short and spear, and talk to you just about that process. So, Mr. Zahn, I'll kick it over to you.
All right. Thank you, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for letting me be here to talk to you some about the targeted improvement plans and some of the work our campuses are doing. TEA, you know, developed the Texas Effective Schools Framework. And this was developed as that, to provide a consistent system of school improvement across the state of Texas. And, you know, this framework is built around five key levers that you can see in the graphic right over there. And the center of this is effective instruction. And, you know, then that is supported by high-quality curriculum, a positive school culture, and effective well-supported teachers. And then all of that is supported by strong school leadership and planning. And those are the foundational levers of the effective school framework. And then the campuses that we provided the targeted improvement plans for have all already completed a reflective prioritization activity where they reflected back on their progress from their 1920 school year and have developed their targeted improvement plan for this current school year. And this process really gave them an opportunity to collaborate with their leadership team, with our school improvement office, with their area superintendents, to determine some key focus areas, areas that you saw in their targeted improvement plans. And this is the ESF process right here that they went through to develop those plans. And over in the blue box over there, you will see that these are the essential actions. And each one of these essential actions connects to one of the five levers we just mentioned in the graphic before. And these are just foundational actions that need to be in place to drive school improvement. And so the campuses start with those key actions, and then they reflect on those key actions and their campuses' implementation level of those actions. For each one of those essential actions, there are key practices for each one, and they go through each of those key practices as a leadership team and evaluate where they are as a campus to determine their implementation level. And to, sorry, kind of give you an example of that, lever four is high-quality curriculum. And if you look over there at Essential Action 4.1, it says, "Curriculum and assessments are aligned to TEES with a year-long scope and sequence." Well, that is the essential action to that lever. But then underneath that essential action, there are four key practices that campuses have to evaluate to see where they stand on that. And some of those key practices are having a scope and sequence, units, and assessments that are aligned to standard, assessments that are aligned to state standard, that appropriate level of rigor, and that are administered three to four times a year, having instructional materials that are aligned to standards and are appropriate for different learners. So going through those key practices, they would evaluate each one to come up with an overall implementation level for 4.1. And then that's where you see, once they've evaluated each of those key practices, they would come up with a label of not started, which would be a one, planning for implementation, which would be a two, beginning implementation, which would be a three, partial implementation be a four, or full implementation, which would be a level five. And then, once they've done that for each of those essential actions, then they drop down to the essential focus areas, and they really pick two and a maximum of three focus areas that they really want to improve upon. And, you know, part of the ESF process is, we know that you can only really focus and implement and monitor a couple of things with fidelity to see improvement. That's why they pick two to three areas. And then those are the two to three focus areas that you see that are the foundation of the tip, and that also will connect to the CIP. All right. This slide is letting you know that we have two essential actions that were the most common across our whole system. And the first, and these are both under the effective instruction, there are two, you know, two key levers there for effective instruction. And the first one is 5.1, which is around lesson planning. And when you look through there, that entails the system at which teachers submit lesson plans, having clear objectives, having a time allotment for how they submit those lesson plans, and then, you know, formative assessments and exemplar responses with those lesson plans. But on top of that, it is also the campus instructional leaders' process for reviewing lesson plans, providing feedback on lesson plans, and the type of support they provide for lesson plans would all be included in 5.1. And then 5.3 is DDI, which is Data Driven Instruction. And that really encompasses two, two different views of DDI. One is the campus administrator systems for how they review and disaggregate data to just track the overall progress of all students on campus and their learning. And then it's how the teachers use DDI and their PLCs to gauge the effectiveness of their instruction, the student learning, and to build corrective action plans to then go back and reteach, so we make sure the students are making the progress we need to see. All right. And this is an example here of 5.1. As Dr. Brown talked about earlier, there are three 90-day outcomes that you will see in the tips where they break out how they're going to plan strategically throughout the year. And this is an example, 90-day outcome you would see in a tip. And the 90-day outcomes are really made of some specific actions, and then you should see a measurable component there to see how that implementation is going within that 90 days. And there would be a different measure within each 90 days. So for this one with the objective-driven lesson plans with formative assessments, you can see that they're going to have a targeted and specific lesson plan feedback system with their teachers. So that way, the administrative team has a way to monitor lesson plan, teachers get coaching and feedback on those lesson plans. And then it also involves going into the classrooms and observing the delivery of those lesson plans and the effectiveness of instruction. And then you have a measurable component that 100% of their teachers will receive feedback on the, on the use of the new lesson plan tool. And then 5.3, again, this is another example for you of a 90-day outcome. This was, is around data-driven instruction. And you can see up there that this is where PLCs will be led by a member of the ILT, that's the instructional leadership team, or teachers, and they'll follow the DDI protocol, see it, name it, do it. After formative assessments and district interim assessments, they will track their formative assessment data through Polaris, and then they will implement, you know, small group instruction, interventions, and to go back and reteach and use their win time at this campus, is what they call that. And then their monitoring piece is, they're expecting to see a 10% growth on student success with each assessment. All right. And then a part of the ESF process involves district commitments. And it's how we, as a district, and within, right here, the area superintendent, the DCSI, the School Improvement Office, how we will support these campuses and their implementation of these focus areas. So for 5.1, some of, some of the ways we support it is partnering with the principal and the instructional leadership team to provide both virtual and face-to-face instruction about safety protocols. We have learned to provide a lot of virtual support right now, and it is a combination of both. We provide virtual support when needed, but where you're also out on campuses, providing direct support and observing classes too. You can see, providing feedback during one-on-one meeting on execution of, feedback on classroom observations, observation of classrooms to support the principal in monitoring, student demonstration of mastery, and then supporting the campus principal through observing and providing input during campus and ILT meetings. So, again, most of those, we are participating in virtually right now, but we are joining in ILT meetings to join in that campus planning. And then 5.3, around data-driven instruction, some of the ways, the area superintendent, the School Improvement Office, and then the instructional facilitators, which Dr. Brown explained some of their role earlier, we provide support with feedback on the DDI practices. By, one, we participate in PLCs and join the PLCs with the campuses. And then we also participate in providing coaching and feedback around the DDI process to the deans and the coaches or principals, whoever is helping facilitate those PLCs. And then, obviously, we provide targeted support related to the DDI process to help all members of the campus leadership team or the campus be able to lead DDI processes on campus. All right. So the reflective prioritization activity is a kind of weird, big word, and it's a new process. But during this past year, the, with our school closure, the state had to make an adjustment. The targeted improvement plan, you can see right there, there are typically four cycles during the year. And due to the closure in March this last year, the campuses only made it through cycle one and cycle two. And to replace cycle three and cycle four, the state created the reflective prioritization activity, which our campuses participated in in July and August, which was just a activity to go back and review their progress, you know, their implementation of their tip in 1920, and where they were as a campus right now. And really, it was to plan summer action steps and to prepare for the start of this next school year. All right. So when we're looking at the RPA right here, we're really going to focus in on Spear and on Short Elementary, which were, like Dr. Brown explained earlier, are two second-year F campuses due to the retaining those intervention requirements and support labels, even though we didn't have STAR last year. So at Spear Elementary, through their completion of the RPA, they still chose to continue to focus on 5.1 and 5.3. And when you looked at the tips, you probably saw it was fairly common for a lot of the campuses to maintain their same focus areas, because most of them felt they didn't get to complete the work that they had started in 1920. So those areas that were important focus areas last year were kind of still the areas of work for this year. And specifically at Spear, there was a lot of professional development and skill building around quality tier-one instruction. So this year, they're maintaining those focus areas, but transferring that to focus on implementation of the high-functioning PLCs, the DDI process, lesson planning and intervention. So really just trying to improve that overall tier-one instruction to maximize gains. Some other supports and key actions they put in place, there was stipend pay for administrators and teachers. At Spear, extra additional contract days to start of the year for additional professional learning to help prepare them. Had a partnership with Region 11 to provide a DDI training for both the administrative team and the teachers to have consistency on that process with the new administrative team coming to the campus. And then the campus administrative team and the teachers worked together and developed the new lesson plan template and alignment on those intended outcomes and just how that process was going to work, which lined up with 5.1. And then there is a partnership put in place with Engage to Learn, where each teacher on campus has a best practices coach and gets individual coaching on, on implementation of best practices in their daily instruction. All right. And Short Elementary completed the RPA as well. And these are some of Short's key actions that they planned for this summer and for this fall till they get going. And they continued with the systems for monitoring and tracking individual student progress. They had also had stipend pay for administrators and teachers to get extra support and professional learning at the start of the school year. They also have an Engage to Learn partnership around best practices and coaching that are making very good progress in that area. And then they're also focusing on guided reading professional development to support literacy at their campus. And then the big program they have is the lesson plan feedback, right there, you see that they have working and has been a big source of the gains they're seeing over there at Short Elementary. All right. So, so right here, we're giving you a little snapshot of some of, some of the data on Short and Spear. And let me explain it just briefly, and we won't spend a lot of time on this, but our baseline data is really the yellow, the star, 1819. And, you know, because that is the last STAR test we have. And then you can see the accountability across the top, the domain one, which is student achievement, the domain two, which is student progress, and domain three, which is closing the gaps, and then the campus' overall score on the far right. CA2 was the last test we had consistently implemented in the 1920 school year, where we had had data, where we could kind of have projected domain rates based on CA2. And then CA1, that you see in pink right there for each campus, is this year's CA1, which we, I know we've had conversations about in other board meetings about how the accountability system and weighting, all that is different, but there are those. You can see for Short Elementary School, overall, how they are making substantial progress from the F rating, where they had a 55 in 1819. You know, they were on pace for a 74 and making significant gains to move out of the school improvement status last year. And then Spear Elementary, you can see that they've maintained right at that 59 overall. They have made some progress in some of the domains. And right now, on the CA1 this year, they're sitting right at that 59. But when you look at their new administration they have in place and their foundation they put in place for improving their overall tier-one instruction, they're sitting at a good place to see improvement there as well. But this is kind of a snapshot of where both those campuses were, based on 1819 end-of-year data and the limited data we have for 1920 and 2021. All right. So our recommendation is that the board approves the targeted improvement plans, and then I believe we are going to be open for questions.
Mr. Zahn for the presentation. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any registered speakers?
No, ma'am, we do not have any registered speakers.
Okay. So we have no registered speakers. So the public hearing on targeted improvement plan for second-year F campuses, Short Elementary, Spear Elementary, D campuses, Berry Elementary, Blanton, Crowe, Ellis, Hale, Larson, Morton, Patrick, Peach, Rankin, South Davis, Thornton, and Webb Elementary, and comprehensive support campuses, Sam Houston High School and Venture High School, is now closed. Once again, thank you very much for such a detailed description of how everything's going to move forward. Before the presentation was made, when I think about improvement plans, my ears are listening for support, focus, action, and outcomes. And I think I heard those words throughout the presentation. And also noticing in the presentation, Dr. Brown and Mr. Zahn, that it's not just the responsibility of the principals and the teachers at this campus, but I really appreciated seeing the commitment from the district in making sure that they receive support as well. So, any of my colleagues have any questions? Yes, Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Mr. Zahn and, and Dr. Brown. I've got to commit it to you, no one saw COVID coming last year, and, and it's got to be very difficult with this requirement. And the disruption it's had in terms of the instruction and able to measure, not only just measure, but carry out tier-one instruction across the district. So it's created quite a challenge, and, but yet, here we are. Fortunately, the commissioner has, just now, today, announced that there will be no accountability for this year as well. But still, I think this is a very, I think, even though this is highly prescriptive from the state, I think you guys would agree that it's good medicine, correct? It's a great process, I think, in terms of providing a focused progress for improving these campuses. Having said that, I do have a few questions, and I'm glad to see that we're still, well, on the one hand, I'm glad to see we're still focusing on essential actions, five dot one and five dot three, which was use of formative assessments and with learning, good instruction with targeted learning targets or learning objectives and formative assessments to drive instruction and also the DDI. And the fact that we're still working on improving our incorporating that in with our P L C process. But given the very, you know, this process requires a lot of different campuses to reflect on root cause analysis of why they did poorly. And as Mr. Zahn mentioned, last year, most of the districts used those two as the two focus areas. And of course, they continued on this year because of the disruption. That's understandable. I know there were a few that did choose some other targets, you would think with the various needs and root causes in the number of districts. It it did strike me, it was a little odd that we didn't see in any more variation in that. And I was wondering if you can answer that question of why there is a lack of variance there. I think Mr. Zahn touched on it, but if you could expand upon it.
Am I taking that, Tracy?
You have something else to add?
All right, yeah, Trustee Will Banks, one thing I I think, looking at one, is the fact that I mentioned earlier that that was work they had in progress and work they had started on the campuses and the work they felt was incomplete, and they needed to finish that, you know, we don't ever like when we start a process and we don't get it fully implemented with fidelity working as appropriate. And a lot of them were in the middle of the work. And then one other factor I think went into that was just the school closure and the pandemic that we we were starting implementing some of those systems at various campuses. And then the systems we had in place for DDI and planning were vastly changed when all of a sudden we're planning for virtual instruction, for concurrent instruction, we're planning, how are we going to do P L Cs when we're not sitting in a room together? How are we, how are we going to do it? So I think just the adjustment of having incomplete work and then having to almost re totally reinvent some of those systems to still support the work so we still provided effective planning, yet we still had ways to measure our students' learning, how are we going to do that? And then how are we going to provide intervention virtually in that setting? I think we're both, two of the factors that we've contributed to them, the heavy focus we had on both of those.
Trustee Will Banks, if I could add one more thing to that, is the the district-wide focus on DDI that we've had the last two to three years is another reason, because, you know, we launched it three years ago, and now we're still trying to continue to go in depth with that work. So I believe that's one another reason why you see those two coming up, because those are district-wide system focus on the planning with P L Cs and then the execution of data-driven instructional practices.
Yeah, and and yeah, I totally see that, and I agree with you, Mr. Zahn, that because of the disruption, I definitely see why we carried those focus, primarily carried the focus areas from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty over to this year. But my question is more, I guess, back to twenty nineteen, why there is a lack of variance? Because I'm sure there were some schools where, you know, they needed to focus on one dot one or two dot one and some some of the earlier foundational levers in the framework. And and so just wondering if it was just, again, I think Tracy answered it, that's the focus of the district. But I just want to make sure that we did our due diligence in that root cause analysis and if campuses had other weaknesses that they didn't all just copy one another, that that essentially was where their focus needed to be and and that there weren't other root cause issues that needed to be addressed by some of those other levers.
Yes, sir, they had the autonomy to choose whatever based on the root cause analysis. Those were just the two highest levers that they can focus on that could really be able to move the needle in a little quicker capacity. So I believe that's another leg of that.
Well, yeah, thank you for that. And and I, you know, having said that, I mean, I agree. I don't think Mr. Zahn was on the first instructional model selection committee. I think that was just Mr. Hagman that was on that committee with me. I think Keisha Mase was on that committee as well. And the first instructional model we chose back in twenty twelve was, I think you guys have all heard me say this before, was the seven strategies of assessment for learning, which probably isn't really a full instructional model. We now have the active learning cycle, but back then, the point is, back then, we, everyone in this district realized the importance of exactly what five dot one prescribes in terms of the use of formative assessments with learning targets and having exemplary models for the students to understand where the, you know, what mastery means and using data-driven instruction to to adjust that instruction in real time so that you can solve those issues before they become bigger problems. And so that was in twenty twelve, and here we are eight years later, and it's still the focus in this district, and it seems like we're still struggling somewhat with that. When I, when you talk to districts across, you know, through the Council of Great City Schools and talk to teachers that have been hired just to have a school over the last ten years, the you, formative assessments and all of those things that are prescribed seem somewhat axiomatic in the profession now. It's just what good teaching is. And and I say that because when I, we look at the implementation levels, it's a little, you know, I'm just slightly concerned that we're still at level, I see some level twos and level threes on the five dot one and five and five dot three strategies. We are making great strides in some of the other non-focus areas. We're we're jumping from two and nineteen to a five, a level five on the implementation in a lot of areas, especially the one dot one and the two dot one areas. And even in a few, you know, one or two of these campuses moved from two to five in three dot one and four dot one. But given our focus on those strategies for so long in this district, it, I I'm just wondering why we would still have any of these campuses still sitting at a two or a three beginning implementation. It seems like we'd be further down the process of implementing these strategies. Is it just taking so long or what is, you know, am I mistaken in terms of how far I thought we were kind of just as a profession as well as a district in being able to master those strategies?
I'll just, you know, respond this part, Trustee Will Banks. I think that the data shows that we still had some work to do as relates to, I mean, the performance in these schools. And so clearly, there were some challenges or some holes that we need to fill. And the planning effective lessons and implementing effective lessons and using data to drive instruction has continued to be a challenge. I mean, this is, this is my sixth year here. I know we've been talking about it since I've been here, but it, we are getting stronger in many areas. But with that comes additional support and learning and training, and so we've just not quite arrived yet. So with these particular campuses, our our schools that are struggling the most, so it it probably makes a little bit more sense why they may be a little bit behind in some of these areas, but have made some progress in others. So I think once we get it to where it becomes the fabric of our system and all of our schools across the, across the district, then we'll be in a much better place than we are in a few of these campuses.
Yeah, well, I know it's been very, very, very challenging and to see the progress that we are making in some of these other areas. And there are a number of four, so we are like in the middle of implementation. We just haven't gotten to any fives yet, which is what I was hoping for this year because these are critical. And I guess you can tell I'm a little bit passionate about those two areas, and I'm glad we were focusing on my, I, you know, given where we need to be with these schools, I just would, my hope was that we'd be a little bit further along. But otherwise, it's a great process. And, you know, and also, some of these schools have had abrupt changes in leadership, and we know that the reason why leadership is one dot one or, you know, a lover one is that has the most impact on the campus and that can be highly disruptive. So some of these schools have had very big challenges, and I get that. I just, my, I'm just a little bit eager for us to get to that mastery level. Now, having said that, I want to thank you guys for creating a Google Drive and putting all of these out. I know some of my colleagues might not be as data-driven as myself, so probably didn't spend as much time as I did on them, but, which was too much. But one of the things I noticed, you had, first, first off, Dr. Brown, you had Anderson Elementary on your list, but there was no T I P for Anderson. Were they not required to fill out a T I P?
Yes, that's correct. So Anderson last year was able, they came off the list, they became a C. So because they were a C, they weren't required to have a T I P. However, we did keep them in the S S N just to continue to sustain the improvement that they have made over the last year.
And so as a result of the great work that the S S N network did, right? How many other campuses have been able to graduate off that since the S S S network has been around for the last three years?
So that was our first year of S S N. And Trustee Will Banks, I don't know the exact answer to that. I know that Anderson did. Dr. Turner, do you know?
Yes, Dr. Brown, and it'd also be Sherrod Elementary.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Sherrod. So congratulation on that. And I do want to commend you guys, too. One of the things I liked about having these on the drive is it would be nice for us as trustee to see in each cycle where we are in terms of being on track with these campuses. You know, we as trustee, you got everyone in this district, I mean, this is the, our greatest commission as trustees and and district officials is to make sure all students succeed, and especially those that are struggling, and which is one of the reasons why this process exists. And so, so thank you for making those easy to access for us as trustees. The twenty nineteen and the twenty twenty, the twenty nineteen, pretty much all of them had the cycle one results and where the campuses were in terms of their goals and objectives for that cycle were. And and the anecdotal evidence I heard over the last year from campus administrators were really disappointed that COVID, in a lot of ways, disrupted STAR last year because they knew they were on track to knock it out of the park. And if you look at these tips, these T I Ps, there's one, two, three, four, five, five or six of these campuses that either had ten of ten performance objectives in cycle one met, and some of these were even meeting their objectives for the year in cycle one as Jared Zahn, Mr. Zahn pointed out, I think with Spear, in the example he gave. So kudos to you guys for that. There were some strugglers in twenty nineteen, and then there were some, the, of course, the twenty twenty, it's hard to read too much into the twenty twenty data given the disruption. I mean, we've got teachers, it's kind of hard to do formative assessments in all the five dot one and five dot three strategies when you're struggling to even communicate to provide basic instruction to students, much less, and sometimes have students show up to even do formative assessments. It's kind of hard to do if they're not even there. So it's extremely challenging, and the numbers reflect that. And some of, they're concerning, but they're not surprising. So I'm sure you guys are equally concerned. What are the strategies? How are we pivoting, given the the situation that we find ourselves in? Because even though we've gotten a pass on accountability this year, that doesn't mean that we give up with these schools. We're still all hands on deck, a lot of heavy lifting to do, even more so due to the COVID slide and the conditions it's created. So that that's been a concern of mine. What, is there anything you can share in terms of mitigating the situation that we're in, in terms of these campuses even reaching their goals for not just cycle one, but cycle two and the, and for the rest of the year?
Dr. Turner, you want to take that?
I will. So, Trustee Will Banks, one of the things that we've really prioritized is narrowing the focus of the work that we're doing. There's a lot of things that compete for principal detention, but really, we have honed in on the fact that instruction has to be the priority. And so one of the things we did a couple of months ago is really looked at all of these big rocks, our essential actions on the tips, and I actually created a look for, right? So there are things and practices that we would expect for campus leaders to engage in, as well as for their staff to engage in, to really move the needle when it comes to student outcomes. Some of those could be, you know, like small group guided reading, small group instruction. We're really trying to identify what is going to ensure that teachers are able to determine what mastery for students looks like, whether they're virtual or whether they're face-to-face in person. So we really prioritize that work, myself along with Mr. Zahn and his team, when we go in and support the P L Cs, or when we're just doing co-observations on the campus, that's one of our look fours. And again, coaching principals, I Cs and Deans on that work. So being very specific and very targeted as relates to the planning support that we provide to them, those are just a few of the things that we've really made a focus and a priority at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. And thank you to the whole team. This, it's going to be hard work this year, and you guys, I think, are the team for it. We appreciate the work that you guys have put into it. And and I'm sure we're going to see great results, COVID or no COVID. But, you know, now that we have the relief from the commissioner, that's going to be a big help so we can focus on just doing the work and not having the the stress of the STAR and, well, we still have the STAR, but the the regular accountability stress. So kudos to you guys. Look forward to approving these.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have any other colleagues that dug deep enough in the data to have another question? Off of the hearing, and we are on to the action now?
No, we're not. We're still in here.
Thank you for asking. Any questions? Okay, please. Absolutely.
Thank you. Madam President, this is remarkable work that you all are doing, very remarkable work. The answer, the short answer, to why we're not further down the road probably is because we have not cured poverty yet. Looking at these seventeen schools, they have the highest rate, huge, huge numbers, way beyond our average for economically disadvantaged, and our, and our average is seventy-three, I believe. Mobility, these families have to move around a lot, in and out of shelters, in and out of living with other people. They, some of these kids don't stay in one place long enough to benefit from what we are offering them. Our district, our teachers, our staff, and our buildings, these buildings are working so hard, y'all are working so hard, to turn this around, to improve all of it academically. It's not for lack of trying. There are things just out of our control. And it's, you know, others have drawn the correlation between correlation between STAR test scores and economically disadvantaged. That's not new. It reminds me of a bumblebee. Aerodynamically, can't fly, but somehow we are. Somehow we are making some improvements, maybe not the improvements that we would like to see. And in a perfect world without COVID, maybe we'd be doing better, but there's a lot of external influences on this whole issue. So I just say thank you, thank you, thank you so much to you for designing this process and this plan, and for the district for lending the extra support in all so many different ways to helping our kids succeed academically. That's, that's what we all want. It's just harder to do than some might think. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Dr. Turner, hello, it's good to see you. Thank y'all very much once again for that presentation for our pre-hearings. I am extremely optimistic that our students will be successful. Thank you for the work that you continue to do. Thank you for being able to handle those things that can be controlled, and hopefully it'll impact some of those things that can't be controlled in the future. I think that's the purpose of education, so thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary LBENJAMI@aisd.net no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am, we have no requests in speakers.
Okay. Our speakers, we will continue on our agenda. Next on our agenda are action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for your consideration those target improvement plans that we just talked about in the open, open hearing. And, and I will say that I echo many of the comments, which is thank you to our teachers in these buildings, and our staff, our leadership as well. They've dealt with a lot of uncertainty. Today, as has been mentioned, the accountability has been suspended for this school year. I do want to thank the board, because this board led out with a resolution early, asking the state to not have the A through F this year. And that was from this board early on in, in the process, and that was, that was very good. And so today, we, we see the result of, of a lot of that work. So again, thank you to Dr. Brown, and Dr. Turner, and Mr. Zahn, and all the teachers in these campuses. So with that, we recommend the approval of these plans.
So we've already had discussion, so do I have a motion? This is an action item. Yes, Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Mays. Yes, I move to approve the target improvement plans as presented.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Reich. Motion by Ms. Walton, second by Dr. Reich. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes if you are in favor of the motion, or no if you are not in favor of the motion. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Louis Hogg, I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Okay, our next action item, consider staffing ratios for the 2021-2022 budget. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for your consideration the staffing ratios for 2021-2022 budget cycle. As a reminder, these staffing ratios are the beginning of, and it seems like it comes by very quickly, but it is the beginning of our staffing process that begins in January. There's a lot of work that has taken place to do that, but it begins with earnest in, in January for the upcoming school year. And so the staffing ratios have not changed. We're not bringing any changes, recommendations for that. It's been pretty stable over the years. We will continue to implement that with discipline, so that we can make sure that we stay within our budget parameters and things like that. So with that, we have this as a recommendation. If there are any questions, we're prepared to answer questions as well.
Okay. Do I have any questions from any trustees? Okay, seeing no questions, do I have a motion? Mr. Will Banks?
Madam President, I move to approve the staffing ratios for the 2021-2022 budget as presented.
Okay, Ms. Fowler, we have a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Ms. Fowler. Once again, we will do a roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Louis Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Our next action item, consider contract for collection of delinquent property taxes. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for your consideration the contract for collection of delinquent property taxes for your consideration.
Okay, do I have any questions from trustees, comments? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
President, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. At this time, I move to approve the contract as recommended by the administration and the order authorizing the superintendent to execute the contract for the terms stated in the contract. And for the minutes to also reflect that, one, there is a substantial need for the legal services. Two, the legal services cannot be adequately performed by the attorneys and supporting personnel of the political subdivision. And three, the legal services cannot reasonably be obtained from attorneys in private practice under a contract providing only for the payment of hourly fees without regard to the outcome of the matter because of the nature of the matter for which the services will be obtained, or because the political subdivision does not have funds to pay the estimated amounts required under a contract providing only for the payment of hourly fees.
Okay, do you have a second?
One second.
Okay, Mrs. Fowler, we have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Ms. Fowler. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Louis Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Our next action item, consider and take action on resolution appointing consultants and directing staff and consultants to prepare for the issuance and sales of bonds. Dr. Cavassos?
We, this, President Mays, thank you for, for that. We are recommending the resolution appointing consultants and directing staff to prepare for the issuance of sales of bonds. So we make that recommendation.
Okay, do I have a motion? Or any questions?
I have a motion.
Okay, Mrs. Fowler, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Reich. We have a motion by Ms. Fowler, a second by Dr. Reich.
Do I need to read it?
Yes, please.
President Mays, I move to adopt the resolution appointing consultants and directing staff and consultants to prepare for the issuance and sale of bonds. Whereas by virtue of election held within Arlington Independent School District on November 5th, 2019, this Board of Trustees became authorized to issue, sell, and deliver $966 million of unlimited tax bonds for the purpose of the acquisition, construction, and equipment of school buildings in the district, and for the purchase of school sites and school buses, none of which have previously been issued. And whereas the Board has previously authorized and issued bonds in a first installment using $311,104,011 of the voter authorization from the election, leaving an unissued balance of $654,895,989. And whereas the Board finds and determines that it is necessary and proper to proceed with arrangements for the future authorization in 2021 of the issuance of the second installment of such voter bonds. And whereas in furtherance of such determination and circumstances, this Board desires to extend the engagement of the district's financial advisor and bond counsel for a potential issuance of voted bonds in 2021. And whereas this Board desires to direct such consultants and staff to take all such action as may be necessary to prepare for the issuance and sale of such bonds using voted authorization to fund school facilities and equipment subject to future authorization of the Board, the bonds proposed to be issued for such purpose are hereafter the proposed 2021 bonds. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Arlington Independent School District that Section 1, Appointment of Financial Advisor, the extension of the engagement of Hilltop Securities, Inc. as financial advisor to the district in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the proposed 2021 bond is hereby approved and confirmed. The execution and delivery of an engagement letter between the district and such firm with respect to such services as financial advisor is hereby authorized in such form as may be approved by the President of the Board of Trustees, and the President is hereby authorized to execute such engagement letter. Section 2, Appointment of Bond Counsel, the extension of the engagement of McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton LLP as bond counsel to the district in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the proposed 2021 bonds is hereby approved and confirmed. The execution and delivery of an engagement letter between the district and such firm with respect to such services as bond counsel is hereby authorized in such form as may be approved by the President of the Board of Trustees, and the President is hereby authorized to execute such engagement letter. Section 3, Appointment of Underwriters, the Board hereby selects and appoints the following firms to act as underwriters with respect to the offering of the proposed 2021 bonds, provided that the terms of such appointment shall be set forth in a bond purchase contract that will be approved by the Board or delegated by the Board to an officer of the issuer acting on behalf of the district at the time that the Board authorizes the issuance of the proposed 2021 bonds. Cybert Williams Schenken Company LLC Senior Manager, JP Morgan Securities LLC Co-Manager, Piper Sandler &amp; Company Co-Manager, RBC Capital Markets LLC Co-Manager, Raymond James &amp; Associates, Inc. Co-Manager. Section 4, Authorization to Proceed with Preliminary Financing Arrangements, the Board hereby authorizes and directs that its financial advisor, bond counsel, and professional staff proceed with such actions, including preparing a bond official statement, making application to the Texas Education Agency for a permanent school fund guarantee for the proposed 2021 bonds, obtaining ratings from one or more national rating agencies, and taking such other preliminary steps needed with respect to the offering of the proposed 2021 bonds, provided that this resolution does not constitute the approval of the Board for the authorization of the proposed 2021 bonds, as such approval may be obtained at a subsequent meeting of the Board when such preliminary arrangements have been made for the offering and sale of the proposed 2021 bonds. Passed, approved, and effective this December 10th, 2020.
Ms. Fowler, once again, we've got a motion by Mrs. Fowler and a second by Dr. Reich. Let's vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Dr. Hogg?
Louis Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Okay, our next action item is consider the extension of superintendent term contract. Dr. Cavassos?
It's for your consideration.
Okay, this is an action item. Do I have any questions, discussion, or a motion?
Ms. Mays, whenever you're ready, I have a motion.
Okay. I don't see any comments or questions. Mr. Hogg?
Now, Dr. Cavassos, our discussion, but expect a little more excitement with that. Education's a tough industry right now. It's very difficult. Our teachers and our staff are working daily with that. A tough job is being a superintendent of schools. My colleague, Mr. Chapa, stated in earlier discussions with him, the, I think the average tenure of a superintendent's three something years. One of the Board's most important jobs we have is hiring our leader, our superintendent of schools to guide the day-to-day, who's committed his life to education, who's committed his life to students, teachers, and staff to make them better. I can say without a doubt, he strives for progress every day. Rigorous and relevant are words we hear every day for our students. It's a tough time for everyone in education. There's daily, constantly, things are changing, decisions have to be made on the fly. It's critical that we have a unified board and a superintendent that is leading our schools. So it is with great endorsement that I make this motion. And I will move to approve an extension of the superintendent's contract. Consistent with the discussion in closed meeting, it's authorized the Board President to execute the contract on behalf of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Hogg?
Second.
Oh, it's a fight, it's a fight. So we'll take a second by Dr. Reich.
I have a second.
Let's vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Hogg?
Louis Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you very much, Mr. Hogg. Well said. Dr. Cavassos, we, we are pleased to pass this vote unanimously. We appreciate your humbleness, we appreciate your thoughtfulness, and of course, we appreciate your leadership. So I just want to let you know that we appreciate you, and it's an honor to be able to offer you an extended contract. Thank you very much for what you do for this district.
Thank you, President Mays, and I thank the Board and this community. It's an honor to serve as the superintendent of schools for Arlington. I love this district and this community, and our students and staff. So thank you for that endorsement. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move to next item on our agenda, discussion action item. There are three items to discuss and take action if we so choose. Dr. Cavassos?
President Mays, and this evening, we bring for your consideration the new boundaries for Berry, Blanton, Crowe, Johns, Rankin, and Thornton Elementary Schools that will take effect in August of 2021, for the 2021 school year and beyond. We've been working through this process. This is part of our bond and our rebuilding of schools in that part of town. It's an East Arlington Master Plan that includes boundary changes. We've had this discussion with the Board, we've gone out to public hearings, we've gotten input. And so Dr. Hill will present the, the recommendation for our boundaries for these schools. So Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and to President Mays, and members of the Board, again, here to discuss the process for redrawing boundaries for the East Arlington Master Plan. Just wanted to kind of remind everyone of the context and the timeline of where we've been so far. So we started this process really back in March prior to the COVID shutdown, and we've gone through all of these dates and steps with all of the processes and getting community input and the like. And we're here on December 10th, recommending new boundaries to, again, take, take effect in August. Wanted to start by just recognizing the committee, the campus principals and their leadership, some of which are on the call tonight, and others are watching, and the community members. They did a lot of work, a lot of input, a lot of recommendations, and so I just wanted to recognize them by adding their names to the, to the presentation for you to see and for the community to see. It's a great job by that group of parents and leaders. The, we had a total of six community forums on November 10th through the 12th. We had two each day, one in Spanish and one in English to be really responsive to those communities over there. And, and attendance were there at those forums were teachers, parents, and, and other staff members. While the attendance wasn't the numbers that we really wanted, we understand that, that the impact, the COVID impact had some issue with that, but the, the, the feedback was, was something that we should really be proud of as a district. Those parents were involved and sharing their thoughts and their recommendations on this process. Those parents were involved and sharing their thoughts and their recommendations on this process. We really put a lot of emphasis, as shared in previous presentations, a lot of emphasis on building capacity, on balancing student population and student safety. Those were the pillars that we really used in this process. And we landed on Option 3 that we presented to you before that just lets you know basically that we went through two options and ended up landing on the third option, which the Board and the committee thought was the best option that we took forward to the community. We wanted to reassure the community and others that there is population balance. And so this report here shows the actual student enrollment, projected student enrollment that would be impacted or that would be in effect if these boundaries are approved. And all of the student enrollment is well within capacity of the building. So that's a good thing. Just wanted to share some of the community feedback throughout this process that we went through. Community members were very appreciative of this whole process, the transparency in the process, the projected enrollment was balanced. They were appreciative of that. They were really appreciative of having a voice and being heard throughout this process. They were complimentary of their own communities in saying that they were very well-established communities and they can handle this change for the better because of the rebuild of the schools and really spicing up that area in East Arlington. And they were appreciative of the trust in the process from the Board and all the way down. There was a lot of comments about appreciation from the Board's perspective. Some of the discussion topics that we had in there were just very overarching, and I can get into as much detail as you want in any of these, but we talked about transportation, about student transfers, about the capacity of the temporary Berry and the temporary Thornton while the new schools are being built. Talked about the construction timeline and wanted to make sure that if the construction ran long, how does that impact the temporary schools? I talked about preparing students now for the new schools. And then we also had a lot of discussion about the academic planning for the new school enrollment. So we've already started, we will be starting that process with Dr. Barlow and getting the actual student data on all the students and giving that to those principals of the new campuses. That's consistent with what we do on any time we do a boundary change. And so we've kind of got that well-oiled machine going. So again, Option 3 is where we landed. We've gotten that feedback and we've taken it to the community. And we do, at this time, recommend that the Board approve Option 3 and that it be effective for the beginning of the 21-22 school year. And at that point, we will be happy to take any questions or further discussion that you may have upon this.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Thank you very much to our committee members. I don't know if we're seeing everybody, but thank y'all very much. You served on the committee for your time that you've put forth in presenting this recommendation. We appreciate your work and we appreciate your input. So, do we have any questions? This is a Discussion Action Item. So do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I have a question, and this is related to concerns I brought up when this was initially presented to us. Was there any community feedback specifically on? There's a couple of blocks where I will, to sum up, I think we have a few blocks where we're proposing to have a boundary that for streets that are very close to one campus are going to a campus that is relatively a good distance further away. And I know that our footprint in this area of town is very dense. And so to some extent, that's a little unavoidable because our campuses were built very close together back in the 50s. And part of the 2019 bond, we're addressing that, and that's why we're doing this. But was there any feedback on a couple of the neighborhoods that I'm looking at here? We've got a carve-out of about three streets. And I understand that this is a historical boundary that's been this way for a while. But a carve-out of about three streets that goes to Crowe Elementary that is a block and a half from Blanton, across the street from Blanton, starting at Collins and Carswell. And then we're proposing to move what used to be part of the Knox Boundary. These are the neighborhoods north of Skylark Drive and east of New York Avenue. We're sending them to Johns Elementary, but those neighborhoods are a good bit closer to Berry. But especially, I would say, the neighborhoods on the northwest, you know, sort of in the northwest corner of Hillcrest and Skylark. They're very close to Berry. I mean, you look at Samuel's Lane and a couple of these other streets, and they are almost across the street from where the Berry property begins, but they're going to go to Johns. So is there any feedback on those specific carve-outs?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chapa, and thank you for those questions. I'll start with the Blanton carve-out that you discussed first. And so we did have, as a committee, had a lot of discussion about that. And Mr. Leonard, the principal at Blanton's here. That carve-out has what was a Blanton attended zone prior to a boundary change a few years ago. And what we talked about was that those students, while it is closer to Blanton, they've never gone to Blanton. It's been about seven or eight years since that boundary change has happened. And they do have the, they're at the Crowe Academy right now, the Crowe Leadership Academy. And so we thought about, would it make sense to force them out of that academy or just offer them to transfer to Blanton if they prefer to do that? And so what we landed on was if there was a preference to go to Blanton, because there is some room there, we would allow them, through the transfer process, to go to Blanton versus, you know, forcing them out of the Crowe Leadership Academy. So I'll stop there, and we can discuss that. Or if you want to go on to the other one, just let us know.
Yeah, and I understand that. And I mean, I think that concern could be addressed partially by grandfathering in the families, you know, that are currently enrolled there. I just, you know, I worry to some extent that, you know, you could also turn the flip side on that and long-term, as we're trying to grow that program, you know, that could create additional spaces for students that live outside of the attendance zone to take advantage of that program as well. But my main concern is that I want to make sure that the parents in that neighborhood understand that it is, it will be easy and feasible for them to go to Blanton if they so choose, because given how close that they are, you know, I always worry when, in situations like this, that there's families where they're just not going to complain and they're going to go where they're zoned. But, and they may not know about the transfer mechanism or for whatever reason don't take advantage of it, when they could walk across the street to go to a campus and the, making the transportation to campus so much easier for the parents might be a consideration that overrides, you know, going to a campus that's a bit further away.
And all those are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, was there any feedback specifically on the neighborhood that I would say is real close to Berry there at certain northwest of Skylark and Hillcrest?
You know, we didn't have a lot of feedback on that. I did talk with our demographer about that as recent as earlier today. And he shared that because of the way the parcel works out, that they, he actually grabbed that. And if he were to split that, then it would really, to a point that Mr. Hogg said a while back, possibly challenge the eye test. He also went back and ran some numbers. And while that is a big parcel, there are very few school-aged children that are in those homes. As a matter of fact, there are only three kids in that parcel that are actually school-aged. And so we can make that adjustment if necessary, but it's a very limited impact. And again, they have that same transfer option as well. So it's kind of open to whatever, you know, we want to do with that.
Sure, and just, I just want to be clear. So that, which area are you talking about? Because I'd find it really hard to believe there's only three students in this neighborhood of approximately seven or eight streets.
Let me see if I can get to that screen. I'm struggling getting to the screen, but it's the, it's the area that is, that was at once a, at Roar, but now it is, I believe it's zoned to go to Johns.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is that the area that you're referring to?
No, sir. The area that I'm talking about was previously zoned for Knox.
I'm sorry, Knox, that's correct.
And it, yes, and it essentially runs from, say, Skylark Drive, where it meets Hillcrest, close to Miriam Lane, and then northwest up to the beginning of the Berry Boundary. It makes roughly a square.
You know, I would have to get with the demographer and really pull the numbers on that because the area that I was referring to was a little bit further north than that.
Okay. But we didn't, we didn't really have any parent or community feedback saying that families in these streets would rather go to Berry because it's closer than Johns?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay.
Mr. Chapa, this is also open for transfer. So that's also an option. And again, that's an option that this Board has been very deliberate about many years, making sure that people have options to transfer if they want to. And we do have capacity in these schools. And I think the transfers will be available as well as another tool.
Yes, correct.
Okay, those are all the questions I have. I would just encourage that there's communication with the families to let them know about the open transfer window. I know we've moved our transfer windows around a little bit. And so, you know, I know sometimes folks aren't entirely aware, even though we try to advertise them, but just know that they have the option, that it is an easy option for them to go online and fill out and request the transfer. Because I would hate for families to feel like, even though we're making some great changes over in East Arlington, that those changes are requiring them to go to campuses that are perhaps inconvenient for them.
Yes, sir, we can definitely work with our Communications Office and the campus principals to reassure and make sure that they're aware about transfer options.
Great, those are all the questions I have.
Mr. Chapa, are there any other questions, discussion? Okay, once again, this is an action discussion item. So if someone wishes to bring forth a motion, yes, Dr. Reich.
Yes, thank you, President Mays. I'd move to approve the boundary presented in Option 3 impacting Berry, Blanton, Crowe, Johns, Rankin and Thornton Elementary Schools effective the beginning of the 21-22 school year.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I hear a second? Mrs. Fowler, motion by Dr. Reich, second by Mrs. Fowler. Let's vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Louis Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Dr. Hill, are you still there?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, since we've got, if I'm correct, two committee members?
Two principals.
On, okay, please.
Yes.
Can they just introduce themselves and say hello? Just appreciate y'all taking your time out, not only to serve, but to be here tonight to watch the vote.
You bet. Go ahead, Mr. Leonard and Ms., Dr. E.
President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity to just serve on this committee. We went through lots of rounds, and it was very valuable. And I just appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Yeah, President Mays and Board, Dr. Cavassos and all of our wonderful folks there, this was a neat opportunity to serve our community. I have to say that my, this system works very well. Dr. Hill's becoming an old hand at this. I don't know if he wants that term, but he's definitely becoming that now. But also with that, though, it was neat seeing our community members. You know, they asked us, as principals, to find these folks. And it was for all of us. It was easy to find strong parents that serve and represent our community. And having their voice on here was, it was refreshing to have them say, you know, yes, really look at safety and look at disruption and what it could do. And it was very valuable and very important. So I'm honored to serve as a president, but honored to serve for the district in this manner. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good evening. Okay, next discussion item on the agenda, reopening schools, 2020-2021 plan update. And any motions? Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening we bring, as we have been bringing every board meeting, an update on where we are with our school operations in relation to the pandemic and quarantine and things like that. So Dr. Brown will take us through this presentation this evening. So, Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Again, President Mays, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief return-to-school update today. So we're going to spend time talking about briefly enrollment, provide an update on our enrollment count. And then we're going to revisit a topic that we continue to explore in our system, and that is how are we continuing to provide interventions for struggling students? So we'll provide an update for you as well. And we will look at AISD data, COVID data, as well as our Tarrant County Public Health Data Dashboard, and then provide an update on our AISD rapid testing, which we started last week. And then we will update the Board and community on our new guidance from Tarrant County Public Health as relates to quarantine. So we always begin with our guiding principles. And of course, we start with flexibility and grace, and that is extending grace and also offering that as we continue to explore this uncharted territory. Educational equity, making sure all of our students have access, equal access to resources and to rigorous learning, whether they choose in-person instruction or virtual learning. Prioritizing the health and safety and well-being of our staff members and of course, our students remains our top priority in Arlington. And then, of course, stakeholder input, making sure that we're leveraging voices from those who are impacted by decisions as we continue throughout the rest of our year. So our enrollment continues to hover around 96.4%. So right now, we're about 96.4% of our projected enrollment of 59,155 students. So a brief update on in-person learning and virtual learning. I just wanted to share something that we started this week is called our Central Office Helping Hands. So we know that our campuses have been extremely taxed in terms of the staff, the workforce, and just making sure they have enough staff members to be able to meet the needs of our students in our classrooms, et cetera. And so our Central Office Helping Hands started on Monday. And so with this, we have Central Office staff members from across the district, even including cabinet members here on this call, who are either assigned to campuses or on call. So if the need arises and I have to go to a classroom and sub in a classroom or support in the cafeteria or in the office, we are all signed up for Central Office Helping Hands. We continue to explore opportunities to provide supports for our students who are struggling through this, through the COVID slide and the challenging that we're having here. So just to talk about a few things that we've done so far, and then we'll talk about some next steps of things we intend to do. And then again, continuing to explore continually to make sure that we've not missed any stone or left any stone unturned, if you will. So we've spent time examining the root cause of underperformance. So we know that it's a challenging situation with some students virtually, some in-person, teachers managing and doing a great job of managing both types of learning environments. But some of our students have not responded well to that. And so how are we able to examine the root cause to determine why they're struggling? And then more importantly, what are we going to do about it once we know where the struggle is? And of course, that's one of the things that we've done so far. In the summer, we had a task force of about 40 members from across the district that included teachers and principals and Central Office members who were part of a task force that helped create grading guidance for our teachers. And that is really, of course, focusing on the mastery of content and how we can provide additional support from them in the virtual environment, especially as it relates to grading. We've also reinforced expectations around response to intervention. So making sure that we're followed concrete process, provide treatment and support as students struggle in our system. And so we reinforce that, and we continue to do that even in our next steps. You'll see in just a moment. A couple of months ago, we talked about Project PASS, and that is really making sure we're focusing on our 3-8 students who have failed a class during the six weeks. They have an opportunity through grade redemption, through the support of their teacher, to be able to, of course, show, first, show mastery of the content. And then if they do that successfully, be able to recover that grade. Our high school students are continuing through Project PASS to credit-recover in edgenuity. That continues to be the regular process for our high school students. Our campuses worked in tandem with their leadership team to create campus action plans. So once you determine what the root cause of the... of the student's low performance, what are we going to do about it? And that can't be done in a vacuum. So staff members, of course, leadership team, met with teachers, worked with teachers to really be able to determine kind of what should our next steps be with this group of students who continue to show that they're struggling. And so each campus does have an action plan that they've created around student failures. We surveyed teachers, and we talked about that during our last update, I believe. And that was just to get their thoughts on, right there on the ground with the students. What do you think is the root cause for the reason why students are failing? And so we also collected that data point from teachers as well. And then continuing to provide tutoring opportunities that teachers are offering to students who are struggling in their classroom or having a difficulty mastering specific content or concepts. Again, we will continue to explore other options. And so I just wanted to share a few more things that we're in the process of doing or will launch in the spring or in January when we come back in second semester, is now to survey students. And so Dr. Barlow's team is putting together a group of students they'll be able to survey, to dig around and see what are some challenges you're having managing either the virtual environment or being in person that might cause you to struggle. Again, looking at data from all different types of ways to make sure the systems that we have in place are going to be able to help support students based on what their needs are and then teachers based on what they see students' needs are as well. One thing that we're really excited about is we have a group of lead principals who are working with Dr. Jarco, one of our area superintendents. And they'll be working on creating a profile, if you will, of a successful virtual student. What does that look like? And so what are key characteristics and qualities of a successful student who's managing that learning environment? And we hope that increases not only awareness for the student and for the family member, but also increases engagement as well. So we look forward to providing you an update once we get a little bit further down in the work, further in the work with that project. Of revisiting our synchronous instruction expectations, we continue again to tweak, to modify, to assess how we're doing with that. And we know that there are some opportunities for us to revisit our expectations around synchronous instruction. Is there an opportunity for an adjustment with that increased engagement and accountability? And of course, ultimately, student success in their classes. And so right now, we are in the process of collecting data. We've met with teachers, we've met with some principals, and we'll be bringing forth a recommendation of any minor adjustments we might want to make that could make a difference in increasing engagement and, of course, student grades as well. We're considering district-wide makeup days. So this, we know that we have lots of students based on the teacher's survey and the grades that we have who have not turned in all their assignments, for example. So could we consider, as a district, having a district-wide day where students are able to not engage in any new learning, no new content, no new synchronous learning instruction, but they're able to look through and say, oh, gosh, I missed this assignment and this assignment. Here's an opportunity for me to go ahead and take care of that. Also, the other side of that, it will give teachers an opportunity, as those new assignments are coming in for makeup, they'll be able to have the space in their day to be able to grade those assignments and offer the support to those students. So that's something we're considering for the second semester. We're also looking at summer school options. We know that we're going to have quite a few students who still may need additional support. So how can we redesign or revisit our summer school programs and make sure that we're offering additional support to fill in some of those gaps that our students might have had during the course of this year? And we'll continue to look at our interventions, those students who are receiving interventions, and making sure that systematically that we're considering how those interventions are working to see what adjustments we might need to make, especially at the campus level. Those are just a couple, a few items that we're working on in terms of exploring additional support for those struggling students. Now, I'd like to share an in-person learning update as relates to health and safety. So as always, we do spend time talking about our Tarrant County metrics for safer in-person instruction. I think we all know these by heart by now, but that seven-day moving average being less than 10%, ideally 5%, 2,000 cases, less than 2,000 cases per week. We'd love to see four weeks of data showing declining case counts as well as a seven-day moving average on the COVID-like illnesses trending lower for the last two weeks. And then the percentage of hospital beds in Tarrant County being below 10%. So I'll share the data with you for Tarrant County. I know that many of you stayed pretty glued to that dashboard as well. And you will see that we are still, of course, in substantial spread in our county. You can see with the seven-day moving positivity rate, we're at 16%. That was as of December 6th. Over 12,700 cases last week in Tarrant County alone, and our COVID-like illnesses at about 8.9%. Hospitalizations at 17%. So that is the data that is updated on the Tarrant County dashboard. So looking at our AISD COVID data, during our last board meeting, we did share that we made some updates to our dashboard to provide additional information about quarantine students and staff. So you will see that as of Tuesday at noon, we had 96 active cases in Arlington. 691 of those staff members are in quarantine. We have 97 student cases and over 3,000 students quarantined as of Tuesday at noon. We did share that this data, as you are aware, is dynamic. So it changes quite a bit. But this is our snapshot on Tuesday. As it relates to self-reporting, and this again is those who are reporting either having COVID-like symptoms, contact or exposure to a positive person, or having or being positive themselves and make a report through our self-reporting system. So you can see in November, now that we've wrapped up November, we almost doubled our case, our self-reports from October to November. So pretty busy reporting structure. We launched our AISD COVID rapid testing last week. And our team has been busy at work, doing a phenomenal job of testing our staff members and our students. So I wanted to take a moment just to share and update as to where we are with that. So right now, our staff members can get tested without a referral, which means they can just drive through and show up between 7:30 and 8:30 and receive and get the rapid test. They stay in the parking lot for about 15 minutes. They complete the paperwork, stay in the parking lot. And then, once the results are in, the nursing staff will let the staff member know what their instructions are in terms of next steps, the results, and their next instructions. The staff right now has the capacity to administer a total of 44 tests each day. Again, most of those are by appointment, beginning at 8:30. So they have slots for 44 tests each day. So here is where we are. As of the end of the day yesterday, we tested 213 students. And that is since, it's about a week's worth of time, about 213 students. 25 of them tested positive, 188 of them tested negative. And so that's just a quick graph to show you where we are so far. And Tarrant County Public Health did issue revised guidance according to, based on CDC recommendation, provided an update as to quarantine and how an adjustment's going to be made in terms of the quarantine of contacts. And so in essence, we have been quarantining right now, if you're close contact, for 14 days. And that's been the guidance we've had from CDC, Tarrant County Public Health, and what we've been executing in Arlington ISD. With the new CDC guidance and with Tarrant County Public Health guidance as well, the 14-day still does apply if there are no symptoms for those in congregate settings. So that would not apply to us. That's nursing homes, memory care, group homes, those kinds of facilities. Where the adjustment does come is in alternative quarantine areas. And so there, if you're, whereas it was 14 days with no symptoms prior, it is now, the recommendation is 10 days without symptoms with no tests needed. So this is going to be for staff members. This will be for students. Without symptoms, we're quarantined for 10 days now versus the 14. Now, there is another option, an alternative, if you will, that is seven days, seven days without symptoms that requires a diagnostic COVID test that's required. And that's for critical employees, critical infrastructure employees. And so we'll talk about now Arlington ISD's implementation of the Tarrant County Public Health guidance. So we will begin our new guideline starting tomorrow that will go into effect December 11th. And with that, we will, our updated guidance will be requiring the 10-day quarantine for those who are close contact, students and staff members. AISD will only consider that seven-day quarantine on a rare occasion or circumstance. And that's only going to be with approval from senior leadership or our superintendent. So that is all I have for the update today. So I'm happy to take any questions you all might have.
All right. Dr. Brown, thank you very much, once again, for your report. Are there any trustees? Yes, Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Mays.
And Dr. Brown, thank you for the presentation, especially on the student achievement piece. I think talking with colleagues outside of the boardroom and teachers and community leaders, the, in seeing education, the risk of students falling so far behind that we don't get them caught up is growing each day. When we were, there was a lot of discussion when we were in the spring of last year. We would tell parents, in September, October, we're going to spend those months and get students caught up. Now we may be potentially a year and a half behind. So, Dr. Brown, I really appreciated knowing that what we're going to have to do, and I'm assuming you said a growth of summer school, offer that if possible. And, you know, some of the predictors, and we all know no one's really great at predicting right now of when this vaccine starts creating a big enough impact. It's given out enough, if it is truly effective on that. So, Dr. Brown, I love the pieces we're putting together. I think we've got to enhance our tutoring. We've got to enhance, you know, so that is funding for teachers to be able to support, bringing in outside tutors, those type of aspects. Potentially, and, you know, worry about how we can even get so many teachers for summer school, because I think they will be so worn out, no one wants to teach in summer school, which I would fully understand. But knowing we have an expansion, potential expansion of summer school to be able to assist. You know, Dr. Brown, with these ideas and where we start coming from, when are we going to see what we need to allocate from a budgetary standpoint to be able to assist with this? These are, I think this is a time, and my colleagues know, I'm not one that loves to go to the fun balance and touch the fun balance. And I fight my colleagues many a time. I shouldn't say the word "fight." Cordially have a discussion with each other about where we send the funds. But I do think this is a time where we have to allocate those dollars. And so I'm not specifically looking for an answer, but I am saying I would appreciate, first off, I want to say there's no barrier to what we have to do to get students caught up. I think I would speak for my colleagues that we're willing to consider what those things need to be. And this is that one time where I would say fun balance comes in to provide that additional support for tutoring, additional support for summer school, additional support for any lessons, any enhancements, any of those type of programs that we need to go. Because I think we all have real concern. The state taking away the high stakes nature of testing was a big announcement today, and it was nice for us. Because it allows our teachers and our principals and our staffs to be able to teach and not worry about a test. They're still going to take the test, and we're still going to use those assessments. And they are good to help us understand where students are. But they're just one of many parameters we use to assess students. So I just say, Dr. Brown, thank you for the, that one, there was two slides, really, that had all the information of what we're coming through, as I was reading it earlier. But I say, I think in, maybe not January, February, we've got to start talking, what's our plan to see what happens in the summer? And I think it's even, you know, I always want to see the numbers. Are we going to have more students repeating a grade this next year? I would have to assume that's going to increase over years in the past, you know? And then there's the old, if a student fails ninth grade, the percent of them dropping out increases tenfold from that area. So I just, are we putting enough programs into that ninth-grade remediation to help students from that program? I'm speaking a little bit in general terms, but I say, I want us to deep dive in this and be prepared as colleagues, as we're going through this legislative session, either push the legislature or this is a time where, for these one-time fundings, things that we don't think are going to be potential multiple-year payments, this is the time where I think we offer this up. And so, Dr. Brown, I say that to keep your brain going, keep it moving, keep the thought process. Because I think you've got a leadership that is ready to help and worry about student achievement, because that is our number-one goal for this district. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Here, here, Mr. Hogg. Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Fowler.
President Mays. And I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Brown for this presentation. I love the idea of the makeup day or days for students. Sometimes it takes to the end of the semester when they are faced with that failing grade that they realize they probably should have turned in those assignments. The thing that I do worry about is that, for teachers to be bombarded with all this work that they're going to have to grade. And I know it's a good thing. I'm glad for the students. But I do worry about the teachers being, you know, like I said, bombarded with all this late work. So if the student has maybe one day to turn things in, is there a way to maybe give the teachers more time than that to get things graded and averaged and put in the grade book?
Yeah, thank you for that question, trustee Fowler. And that's certainly a consideration. We can definitely consider that. We've not made any, you know, taken any kind of action on that yet. We're just kind of in the exploration stages. So we certainly can explore that and even get teacher voice on how that could look. We could certainly do that.
I do. I think that's very important to get the teacher input and ask them how they feel about this. How much time do they think they would need? And let them be a little bit more involved in the decisions. But I think it's a great idea, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Walton.
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you, Dr. Brown. You are just batting a thousand tonight with creative and well-thought-out ideas. I echo what Mrs. Fowler just said about, you know, let's go to the teachers for some input on maybe some of the how-to aspect of this great idea. I know that you can't tell us everything about every part, but I just want to say to you and to, maybe this is in your plans, I'm quite concerned about the social, emotional state of our children, all of our children. But I'm hearing that our older, upper-grade high school kiddos are really struggling with the isolation, those, that peer group is so important to. And at some point, maybe not tonight, but at a later date, maybe your report could include some ideas for how to address helping these students. And it probably has a lot to do with the fact that they are behind on their assignments, with the fact that they are behind on their assignments, failing a class, not going to class, that sort of thing. It's kind of a vicious cycle. If we could get them being successful, then they'd feel better, kind of a deal, I guess. But I would appreciate anything you could offer us on that.
Yes, ma'am, we certainly can offer that in the next presentation and just kind of go a little bit more in-depth. I know that our social-emotional learning team has been working, really working in concert with our social workers, working with our campuses to make sure that they are looking at some specific social-emotional learning practices to engage students. This year, our guidance team focused on their, they named a culture of care, which is really focused on how are we growing and developing relationships, especially virtually? And then, if you're connected to students virtually, are you able to know that they may be in crisis to make a virtual referral to our hotline that we have available Monday through Friday, or the mental health crisis hotline that's available 24/7? So just really being able, the more you connect to them, the more you'll know what challenges they might be, that they might be facing. So we do have some very specific components that our SEL and Guidance Counseling Team have been working on, even our parent and community engagement team has been working on. So I think it'd be helpful, if we can just share that with you all, the next update, we can provide a more thorough view of what that work has looked like.
Thank you, that would be great. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Dr. Raj.
I don't have a question, just a comment. I echo what has been going around the dais here. I just want to say thank you so much. It is so refreshing to hear, hear the extraordinary steps that you're taking and doing everything you can to be innovative as possible to help our students as well as our teachers be successful during these unprecedented times. The, what is it, the central office helping hands, that's fantastic for senior administration on down to be willing to get in there, in the classrooms if need be, to help sub, to make phone calls and reach outs, is wonderful. So thank you for that at a minimum, on top of everything else that you're doing and considering doing to try to help our students be successful and our teachers as impacted as they are right now. I know that will certainly mean a lot, and my guess is, you're going to be taking up on that quite frequently. So, thank you very much, I really appreciate it and look forward to the additional information to come on progress of all these things. Thanks.
Dr. Raj. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, once again, Dr. Brown, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, our next discussion action item, if there is, is consider motions necessary to address any new guidelines, rules, proclamations, orders, or other acts based upon COVID-19 that are issued between December 4th or 10th, 2020.
Thank you, President Mays, and we do not have any of those motions to consider tonight.
Okay, next on our agenda are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Okay, no items to be withdrawn. So tonight, we're considering the items listed on your agenda under consent items, Mrs. Moss? Good evening.
Good evening, President Mays. Trustees, Dr. Cavassos, we have four bids on the consent agenda for your consideration tonight. Our purchasing department, again, has reviewed these, embedded them out per our bid policy. We have several items as well that are in excess of the $50,000 threshold for your consideration tonight, and we have donations that total $10,140, bringing that year-to-date total to $336,777. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Moss. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hogg. Motion by Mrs. Fowler, second by Mr. Hogg. Any discussion? Let's vote. Dr. Raj?
Aaron Raj, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Boobie Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Consent agenda passes in the affirmative. Thank you once again, Mrs. Moss. Okay, next on our agenda are open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Okay, then we will continue with our agenda. Next, we have our superintendent's report, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and as consistent with superintendent report over the board meetings we've had, is a thank you, sincere thank you to our teachers and our students and our staff for the work that they're doing. I'd like to specifically point out the staff that is working on our testing center, our COVID testing, led by Annette Minnery and the nurses that work there. Thank you for taking up another responsibility and leading it with excellence. I was on a call today with Chief Krausen, and he complimented AISD's Health Services as a model for the implementation of protocols and reporting, and so I just sincerely thank our school nurses, specifically the ones that are managing the testing center and providing that service for our students and our staff. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do we have any board members with reports? Yes, Mrs. Fowler.
Thank you, President Mays. You know, yet one more thing that COVID has ruined are the birthday shout-outs that the kids used to get mainly at the elementary, the day of their birthday, on the morning announcements, they would say their name and their birthday, and they're not able to do that anymore. So I want to do a special shout-out to my favorite 11-year-old, fifth grade at Ditto, Presley Wallace. She is just a precious little girl, and I know she looked forward to having her name called out on her birthday, and that wasn't able to happen, so I wanted to do that for her. Thank you.
Mrs. Fowler. Any other reports from trustees? Yes, Dr. Raj?
I just want to say that I hope that everybody has a joyous holiday season. It's a very different season than we will have ever experienced. Hopefully, we'll never have to experience anything like it again. This time of year is usually so filled with the hustle and bustle of gatherings and parties, and it's a beautiful time of year of highlighting our amazing fine arts that we have in this district, and they are all so busy usually this time of year at every campus. And that's not going to occur this year, and that's a great hardship on many, the students and the teachers and admins that put so much effort into that. And of course, it's also a point where so many people in the community that are benefited with all of those amazing performances are also sad that they're not able to experience those and give those students that opportunity as well. So with that said, I just hope that everybody through this season can think of those times that we have had in recent seasons, and just don't take anything for granted, enjoy your families as much as you possibly can. I just wish the best for everybody in this very different holiday season. There's still many things that we can find joy and rejoice with, so that's all.
Well said. Any other comments from trustees, reports? Yes, Mrs. Fowler?
Just remind people, especially the students and parents, if they're struggling here toward the end of the semester, to remind them that we have some retired AISD teachers who are manning the Excel Learning Academy, and they're teaching all different grade levels, all different subjects. So if your student is struggling, it's Excel Learning Academy for some great tutoring services.
The reports from trustees?
Okay, so just in going with the continued theme of recognizing our students, as we have earlier in the meeting this evening, I just wanted to say a few things from our athletics department. We have four of our football teams that have advanced to the playoffs. Martin High School is currently playing tonight. Once we're done and you want to tune off, they're on NFHS, being televised. At the top of the third quarter, they were up 37-0. We also have advancing to the playoffs Arlington High School, they will be playing tomorrow night. Sagan High School advanced to the playoffs, they will be playing Saturday, and Bowie High School has advanced to the playoffs, and they will be playing Saturday, and they will be televised on NFHS as well. So please visit aisd.net if you're looking for times or locations to support our students. Also, for volleyball playoffs, we had three of our high schools advance to playoffs, our district champions, Martin High School, and then we also had Arlington and Bowie advance to the playoffs. So all three of their seasons have ended, but we are so especially proud for you representing AISD. Also, our district champs for cross-country, boys Sam Houston, girls Martin, and for our cross-country, we had athletes from Martin, Sam, Arlington High School, Bowie, and Sagan that competed at the regional meet. So congratulations. Secondly, if you've been seeing, and please, if we can get a close-up of this poinsettia, close-up of the poinsettia, look at that, that's awesome. Just wanted to let y'all know that the cost of these poinsettias that you see sitting around is priceless. They were grown by the hands of the students in our horticulture department. They have been growing poinsettias for a couple of years now, and I must say that my poinsettias pretty much last almost till the next Christmas season when it's time to get another one. It is amazing, and I'm not exaggerating, they last forever. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to our horticulture department for the good job that they do and the tender love and care that goes in to make them last so long. They are beautiful. And then lastly, I also just want to wish everybody a safe holiday. I know everybody's counting down to next week. Teachers, please have an opportunity to pull away and decompress and just be able to regenerate before the next year. You deserve it, we hope that you get it. Parents, at least you won't be having to help teach on the laptops, your kids will be there, that's great. But as Dr. Raj had mentioned, just take every moment to enjoy your families, students, enjoy the break. I don't have my kids home now because they're out, but my youngest came home from college today before I left for this meeting, and he opened the door with all of his stuff, and he said, "God, the house is really clean." And I said, "Yeah, y'all haven't been here." And I wanted to stay just this way when you're leaving, so take note of what it looks like so as you're leaving it looks the same. So, parents, just thank y'all for hanging in there, thank you for everything y'all done, and once again, everybody, please have a blessed holiday break. Okay, Ms. Secretary, do we have anything to report?
No, President Mays, we do not.
It is 9:17, and this meeting is adjourned. Good evening.